Welcome, welcome everybody to Powerful Living Hour. Uh, we're gonna open up with prayer. Um, Father God, we thank you for this hour that you have given us, or hour and a half you have given us. Lord God, we ask that you have your way in here, Lord. Uh, let me decrease and your Holy Spirit increase within me. Lord, just use us, Lord, um, give us revelation, Lord God, as we uh, go through even with the stuff that we got earlier from this, but give us revelation, Lord, that we can apply what we uh, learn in here tonight to our lives and and glorify you with it and be a blessing unto your people in the name of Jesus. Amen. Our lesson is on Deliverance from Bitterness. The background scripture is uh, First Samuels one and ten. First Samuels one and ten. And since we have the devotional reading, uh, First Samuels one, two through nineteen, we'll just go over this uh, verse because uh, the story will be told in uh, the devotional. In Acts eight and twenty-three. Acts eight and twenty-three. Romans three and fourteen. Romans three and fourteen. Hebrews twelve and fifteen. Hebrews twelve and fifteen. Colossians three thirteen through fifteen. Colossians three thirteen through fifteen. And our dev- devotional reading comes out of First Samuels one, two through nineteen. First Samuels one, two through nineteen. And could I get somebody, uh, please, we'll start off on this side. Mother Adams, I think I'll grab you since um, Sister Betty's up, sorry about that. Uh, First Samuels one and ten, uh, Mother Adams. Yes ma'am, and give a little bit of insight on that. Where's your mic?
The wrong course. And she was in bitterness of soul and prayed to the Lord and wept in anguish. This was a time when Hannah was like upset, angry, sad, disappointed because um, her husband, uh, Elkanah. Uh, Penana had children for Elkanah and she didn't have any. But Elkanah thought, thought that because he took good care of her and gave her everything. He said, I'm, I not better to you than ten sons. But um, she wanted a child, but this was all in the plan of God uh, to work out the best in her and that br- bring advances larger plan that he had. And it, and it even extended to Israel. Uh, the background reading that I read was saying that but Israel um, uh, was bitter too at one point when they were, some of them I should say, when they were in Egypt. But God had made a covenant with them and working out things for them, but they couldn't see it. So Hannah couldn't see what, the scripture said was the Lord who uh, type of wombs or made her barren.
Right.
So God did was, this was all his purpose and plan to bring out the best out of her and to excel her. And if you see in the second chapter, how she was magnifying the Lord and glorifying, but if the first chapter, she was so grieving hurried. But it's just like with us and uh, things doesn't work for us. We believe everything is against us, God is distant from us and he is not hearing us, but and when we get the good news and God worked for us, we say, like the woman come see a man and we rejoice.
Amen. Um, I have um, the applica- life application, study Bible, and it was reading like it says, um, "In her deep anguish Hannah prayed to the Lord weeping bitterly." Um, I think you probably have the King James. And I was, I looked up anguish and because the lesson is Deliverance from Bitterness, um, the anguish is, it said severe mental or physical pain or suffering. And then that's the not, the noun, and then the verb is be extremely distressed about something. So, as you were saying, Pen and Iowa was messing with Hannah because of her jealousy, number one, because she was jealous Hannah was getting this attention. Um, and, but Hannah was bitter because she didn't have a child. So that was what was going, and you, you explained pretty much what was happening. But that is what was going on there. Um, and um, but we see too in reading this story how Hannah handled her bitterness. She didn't handle like some of us would, like strike out at somebody. Um, she went to God. And like mother said, God is the one who had done this. Anybody else have anything before we move on? Thank you, Mother Adams. Mister Betty, could you get Acts eight and twenty-three, please?
Eight and twenty-three. "For I perceive that thou art in the gall of bitterness and in the bond of iniquity." Okay, this is, has something to do with uh, um, Peter, uh, well, Simon was a sorcerer and he was trying to buy the Holy Spirit because he had been, the people looked up to him because they thought that he had great gifts and he was doing witchcraft and sorcery and they, they thought he had real power. And then when he saw, who is it, Peter? Peter and another disciples where healing people.
Peter and James, I think that.
Peter and.
I might be wrong, I've been.
Yeah, it was another disciple he was with and they were doing things like healing the sick. Uh, you know, they had the real power. And so he wanted to know if he could buy the power, and that was for his own selfish gain. And so, um, Peter rebuked him and told him, you know, it's like he, he cursed him and he said that uh, you know, that may your money perish you, and I think they call that blasphemy, blasphemy. Uh, Simon blasted against the Holy Spirit because he wanted to take it and use it for his own monetary gain. And so, um, Peter rebuked him. And so, uh, when he rebuked him, I think Simon had that bitterness. He had bitterness because he, he didn't understand how he couldn't buy this, this Holy Spirit.
Right, so. Um, his heart was filled, uh, Simon's heart was filled with desire to control the power of the Spirit. He was trying to, uh, he wanted that and he thought that he could buy that, you know? So we see the heart is very deceitful, full of sin. It's but, and the heart is where God speaks us, that's where he goes anyway. When, when we are converted, that's where he goes and he knew Simon's heart was not right. So his heart was full of, of, uh, it wasn't full of, you know, good things, he desired to control. And, and God knows our heart. And he, his sinful desires like pride and greed was set in there, so those are sins. And, you know, it, it said that we cannot earn or purchase God's gifts. They're freely given to us. So he didn't know that. Simon didn't know that and he was trying to get that. Uh, and it, and, and this verse is just saying that he was full of bitterness and captive to sin. He already had that stuff set in there, it was already in, if it's in here, it's here. If it's here, it's here. So it was already there.
Like, um, clarification, that was Simon, Peter rebuked him, but that was Simon the sorcerer who wanted to buy the, the gift.
Right, right.
Did I say the wrong thing?
No ma'am, we was just.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's.
Yeah, that's what she was doing.
Yeah. Yeah, that was true. And I, I wanted to say something else too that, uh, uh, Simon went so far as to have him, he was baptized. And he was like going through all the motions like a lot of us Christians or believers. We go through the motions outwardly, doing everything a Christian is supposed to be doing like a pastor corrected me when I first started Bible study. When I was telling him I don't do what I used to do, I don't go to places I used to go. And he told me that, you know, I was doing it.
Right.
The Holy Spirit has to want, has to be the one to change your heart. Because uh, whatever uh, is in you, it's gonna come out. You can tell the spirit by the spirit, so you can't pretend that you are a Christian, a believer, and you're doing everything in front of uh, everybody else. But God knows what's really going on inside your heart.
Right, and with you saying that, um, the scripture created me a clean heart and renew a right spirit in me. That is something that Simon hadn't even done, he hadn't repented. He hadn't repented. He, he went in there focused on getting what he wanted to get. He didn't care what anybody else, he wanted to get what he wanted to get. Anybody else on that one?
Um, this was Simon the sorcerer. If we um, not in the spirit and we look around, this is going on today too, you know, you have palm readers, uh, soothsayers. You have, um, astrologers, people who cut the card. Now, I'm not saying this is everybody, but I've seen this happen. You, when you, you find that when you go to the altar, and the mothers them, God bless them, they, they like open their eyes to this, you find people who say, I'm not saying that every.
Put your mic up. Everybody can hear that.
So some people, they, they don't like hold their hand like that, because people read your, it's not, that's why you have to discern the gift. Palm readers, they read the palm of your hand, soothsayers. So you have to be so careful, that's why you have, but Peter was so anointed, had the spirit of God. He came then he knew right of the top. Simon the sorcerer was making money, but the people said, but everything he said is so. Yeah, because you got people who, you remember the lady from Florida, I forgot what her name was, who used, people used to go to and call her Miss something. Chloe, it was Cleo, yes. So, so you have to be so careful. But then Simon started with the anointing with the gift of God. They realized, hey, there's something different and that's why they said, we want to be baptized. And a lot of them repented, even Simon the sorcerer.
Right. Elder Nixon, can you get Romans three and fourteen, please?
Whose mouth is full of cursing and bitterness?
What you got?
Um, there, everything that they bring out of their mouth is not, um, they're cursing God, they're not glorifying God, they're not lifting God up in any way, they're not, um, showing uh, the love of God, that everything that they're doing is, is casting God aside. And so, you know, it says, um, "You praise me with your mouth, but your heart is far from me." You know, so I mean, they're pretending to be God-given and God, uh, feel, but their, but their, their mouth is telling a whole different story.
Yes ma'am, and in here, uh, if you go back and you read those other scriptures a little bit before it, and it was just talking about the body part, the throat, the tongue, the mouth, and the, all those part, parts, and they talked about being poisonous. You know, it's just talking about how they can be a vicious tool, be used as a vicious tool to hurt somebody. And people do that, they do that, um. The bitterness part of this is talking about, well, cursing part is verbally wishing somebody harm. Because we know that if, if a curse was put up on you, that meant they're trying to hurt you, right? So cursing from our mouth is, is bad words to hurt somebody. To harm somebody. And then the, the bitterness, it points to an underlying attitude of hostility. You know, I'm mad at them, so I'm gonna curse them, I'm gonna do whatever it takes to hurt their feelings. And what do we use it with? We say the tongue is one of the most powerful tools. It can cut you, it doesn't, it can stab you through a door. The door doesn't have to be open, it can make its way through that door to hurt you. You know, you don't have to even be there. You don't even have to be there for the tongue to hurt you.
It, it's like, as far as, as far as I'm, what I'm understanding is that, uh, they're supposed to be believers, but they're causing havoc in the church with their mouths.
Yes.
They're uh, tearing down God, the temple of God in the, in the church and among e- each believer. They're bringing curses and not blessings. Amen. Yes ma'am.
Because it says in the scripture that the power of life and death lies in the tongue.
Yes ma'am.
And then, um, if we read this story about Hannah and how she was, she was turning so bitter because she thought God was not answering her prayer, she was barren, she was getting ridiculed. And then it was like a bad for a woman to be married and not have any children.
Right.
And so they were making fun of her, but then when she spoke to Eli, the priest, uh, his words lifted her up and made her happy. Because he told her that, he, first she thought she was drunk when she was, and with her mouth and she was talking to herself and he, he thought that she was drunk, but she told him she was just praying to the Lord. But then his words, so that's why I say your words can, when you speak to somebody, your words can bring them out of a place that they were bitter, angry, you know, and that's why the power of the tongue is when if we're church members and we're fellowshiping, we should be careful about lifting each other up.
Yeah.
So that we can, you know, praise God. And then we'll be able to, uh, to go on in this journey.
Yes ma'am, um, Elder Nixon, I thank you for going back and clarifying about what they were doing in this lesson. Um, I was just explaining how those things hurt people, how the tongue hurt. Um, we will go to Hebrew, Hebrews twelve and fifteen. Do you want to read Minister Stefan tonight?
Looking carefully lest anyone fall short the grace of God. Thus any root of bitterness springing up cause trouble and by this many become defiled.
God.
And I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to study.
Okay, um, anybody else want to help him out? I, like I said, I, I studied from the Life, uh, Life, uh, Amplified, no, the application, and their verse says, "See to it that no one falls short of the grace of God and that no bitter root grows up to cause trouble and defile many." And, um, he's warning them, uh, for us, as Sister Betty said earlier, to uh, ensure that no one falls short. That means by us not causing something to cause somebody else to fall. And like if I got mad at Elder Nixon and I went to Sister Betty and I started talking about Elder Nixon, Sister Betty could be hurt by what I said and it, it would hurt her walk with God. Because she's like, I didn't think you were do- I guess it's okay to do that, so let me go tell Sister Sharon. And then that, that just keeps moving in the community where people are hurt and fall. It says that they will fall short of, of the grace of God, which is salvation. And that no bitter root is talking about, don't let that set up, because it will grow. If it grow, if I'm talking about her, it's gonna grow in her, and if it grows in her, she's taking it to her. And if she's taking it to her, she's taking it to her. It's growing all up in the church or wherever in the community. So that root has taken place. Um.
I saw it as a, like a cesspool.
It could be.
You know, it's like you got a big old, um, pool of clear water and you throw something in there, it ain't supposed to be in there, it gonna contaminate that whole pool. And that's the church. So it's nice starting out, you might say something about Sister Sharon, I tell sister, sister and Mother Adams, then Mother Adams.
That's how it goes.
We got a rebellion in the church, the whole pool, it, it's like a pool, it's, it's polluted.
It's, yep, it's, it's hindering somebody's walk, you know? Um, we, we need to, like you said earlier, we need to be very careful when we talk. Like even if I went and told you, Sister Betty should have said, Mother Brenda, we need to pray for you and pray for Elder Nixon. We don't need it, she don't need to take it to her. Let's stop it right where it's at, you know what I mean?
I have to say, I ain't pointing at nobody, I'm guilty, you know what I'm saying? But I know, I'm, I'm in my walk, I have a hard time forgiving myself.
Right.
So I'm in my walk, I'm not accusing nobody in here. You know, we all, like you say, it's no excuse, but we're all in, we all fall short. But I just know that now, when I do that type of stuff, which I'm still, I did it yesterday, I was, oh Lord Jesus, please forgive me. And, uh, you know, I keep having to correct myself.
Right.
And so that's what I'm saying, um, to, uh, it's, it's a walk. And, uh, I had to correct Betty all the time, because when I do it, it's like something convicts me. And then I'd be off the phone, I'd be sitting there watching TV, saying, you know, you shouldn't have said that. And then I'd be off the phone, I'd be sitting there watching TV, saying, you know, you shouldn't have said that.
But Sister Betty, it all happens to every last one of us, it's not just you. It's me too, it's all of us in this room that have to know that this lesson comes to tell us that there are certain things wrong. And we shouldn't be doing them, okay, now you heard this lesson tonight, when you leave from here, you ought to be working on that if you wasn't working on it before. So, yes, right, Sharon, you're accountable, so it's, don't look just at yourself, because we've all been there, we've all fallen short. Um, and it made me go back to Hebrews twelve and fourteen, it said, make every, every, and this is out of my Bible. Make every effort to live in peace with everyone and to be holy without holiness, no one will see the Lord. So I'm causing you not to see the Lord, cuz I'm mad at Elder Nixon, and you're causing Sister Sharon not to make it either, you know?
And even sometimes in our walk, just listening to the conversation. The person you talk to may never say anything to anyone else, but it will destroy them, because it, looking at you, they say, well, who can I trust? If Elder so-and-so, if Minister so-and-so, if Pastor so-and-so can say this. They may never spread it, they may never tell another person, but you could destroy that person's walk with God just by a momentary lapse in. I need to say this, and I'm mad, or just. Making sure that we're taking that into consideration as well, because sometimes it won't pass. But sometimes you may destroy that person in their walk with God, even just by sharing something.
Right, and then I, I'm, I'm grateful for the lesson because it, it makes us look at ourselves, and we have to examine ourselves every time. I can, I don't, um, like, there's things that's happened to me that I was like. Like a little kid, except my lips stuck out and I'm mad, you know, I'm mad, and it take me a day. But that, uh, in that day, God's working on the brain, the heart, and everything else, and I had to repent. I have to say, God, please forgive me, okay, you're gonna have to help me, cuz you know, you know how I was, boy, it took, it was rough. It was rough, you know, and, um, but. He convicts our hearts, these lessons, like Sharon said, makes us accountable, and we know, we know now what he expect.
So, uh, what I was gonna say is that when we do things like that, we put weight on people.
Yes, yes.
We weighs down in their spirit, you know, on their mind and on their heart, so we, we have to be careful. What we share. And why we're sharing it. Now, if you're sharing it because you need, you want them to pray, that's a whole different story. But if you're praying, if you're saying it because I just need to tell somebody this, okay, then you're, you're doing it for the wrong reason.
Right, correct, Elder Nixon.
Yeah, to add to that, that's why I say, we ought to watch over one another with care, so they not leave the faith. And Sister Betty, the, I do what you said too, you know, Minister Stefan had preached a wonderful message. So I said, Lord, I see myself in that I need to repent, you know? Like pulling back, pulling back and doing to, to pastor, on the Zoom meeting yesterday, pastor called my name to say, if I wanna do something, and I. Sitting at my desk this morning, it convinced me, I had to text him, I said, whatever, you need.
Is that what, is that what you were saying to me today?
But I was thinking about, you know, that's why it's so important that when you do feel offended, that you pray about it and go to that person.
Right.
You know, and so you don't hinder anyone, and that's, and then because we do fall short of it, and just like the scripture says, or like Elder, um, Stefan was saying. You know, you will hinder someone else, you may stop it because they do, but then at the same time, are we looking at man, are we looking at God? So I mean, but that's something that we have to take in consideration, even, you know, like Elder Nixon just said, you know, are we sharing, cuz we need help with it? And we need, where, where is your, the spirit of, of what you're sharing?
Thank you, Sharon, cuz God's perspective should be the first thing that we think about, but it's not always, it's not always the first thing that pops up. I mean, I thank God for the Godly people around me, because if I don't realize it, they will. And if I ever say anything out of way, they will say it to me, they will let me know. And I have to think about it, because I know it's true. I know that it's his perspective and not mine, he doesn't want me to see anything the way I see it. You know, it's not about me, so, um, can we go to Colossians three? And thirteen through fifteen, please? Mother Shirley Case. For bearing one another and forgiving one another, if any man have a quarrel against any, even as Christ forgave you, so also do ye. And above all these things, put on charity, which is the bond of perfection. Effectness, and let the peace of God rule in your heart, to which also ye are called in one body, and be ye thankful.
What's this telling us, Mother Shirley?
It's called instructions.
Yes, ma'am.
You need to forgive, if someone does you wrong, you need to forgive them. You will be forgiven.
Amen, yeah, like she said, these verses, they encourage, uh, us as believers to practice forgiveness. And, and love, and that we should be tolerant with one another, because we all know that we're flawed, we all flawed, um. We, we need to toler, be tolerant of one another and forgive each other, just as Christ forgave, you know, forgave us, or forgave us, or them. Um, and in fourteen, it calls for us to add the love part of it to it, that is. The supreme virtue is love, cuz that's one of the things that he said, and that love binds everything together in perfect unity. And, and this, uh, passage, it, it, um, concludes with the peace of Christ. And it should be the guiding principle, we should keep peace with all men. We should keep peace with all men, that is the guiding principle for that, anybody else have anything on that?
I think really just not trying to justify, um, our anger, or justify the things that we do. Remembering that there's no big or little sins, you know, and I think, me personally, I can talk about me, right? Sometimes I get into the, well, I would have never, you know, well, I know I, but, but I wouldn't have done that. But I have to remember, there's no big or little sin, so there's some stuff that I do do, you know, there's some areas I fall short in. And not trying to justify it or say, well, I, I wouldn't have did that, you know, or maybe I would have, but I wouldn't have, you know, but. We all fall short, and just making sure I give myself grace, but then also I extend that same grace to other people and say. Okay, well, there's another person out there that the thing that I do or did would say, well, I wouldn't have done that, you know, so I need to extend that grace to others.
I thank God for powerhouse ministries, it has fed me, it feeds me, and then it, it has young people that are so wise in it. Um, but I like that when you said justify, cuz I was thinking about how I do, you know, and just back in the, some of the things that I've done. How I, well, I didn't say that, they said this, that's what made me do that, you know, that's how we do, you know, we're justifying why. Some, I, I did this because he did this to me, you know, and that's not the way God wants it, he wants us to show that love. And hopefully that they will in turn do the same thing, but we do, um, we do try to justify those things, somebody else have anything?
Uh, Brenda, this is what I found out about me, okay? If I, and it's, this is a growth, uh, growth thing, this ain't nothing that I walked, this started doing, okay? But, uh, when I, when I don't understand a situation, I shut up. And I let God lead me, because if Charlotte says something, it ain't gonna be right.
Man.
It isn't, you know, and if I react to it, it's not gonna be right.
Right.
So I have to step back and say, you be quiet. And when God wants me, when God reveals to me what's going on, then if he got, if he leads me to say something, I will, but most of the time he don't. So. I just be quiet.
You know, that's like we was saying, it says we need to extend others' grace, and I think. A lot of times it's easier, easier for us to extend other people's grace, but not ourselves. And that's one of the challenges that even, like Elder Stefan was saying, that you have to extend your own self-grace, you know, that, and that's doing, even the self-examination. As you're doing it, that's extending your self-grace, so realizing exactly the different things that you are falling short in, and trying to correct it and striving for that. Cuz like we talked about, it's a process, it's not, you know, you're not gonna stop growing, you're continuously growing.
Anybody else?
I, I just wanted to add that, you know, and even sometimes, um. When we're looking for answers and looking for things, sometimes, um, no answer is the right answer. And sometimes we, we ask our questions, and we, and, 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 Lord, I can't hear for you. Sometimes no answer is the answer, right, because even we can look back at Jesus Christ, he's in the garden, he's, well, Lord, let this cup pass. He went back a couple times, went to the well a couple times, and didn't hear anything. Because he knew what the assignment was, sometimes no answer is the answer in itself. So we have to remember, if God told me, I, I need to give myself, and, and if I'm going back and going back and I don't hear anything. Yeah, you know what the answer is.
Amen. Sister Betty?
Well, um, my thing this week, um, was forgiveness. I used to think that if I held this grudge and I didn't forgive you, it was like I was doing something to you. But that's not doing something to you, it's doing something to me, because I'm holding on to something that's negative. And then it's gonna poison my system, and then it's gonna separate me from God, and our whole walk is to stay connected.
Right.
And so if, um, it just, I just, I'm, I learned this week that, uh, when you forgive somebody. Just because, just because. If you wanna stay in the kingdom of God, you have to forgive those who you feel have trespass against you. And so once you release that, because I seen some things that happened this week. Once I released, went to God in prayer, forgave, 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 forgave. And all the things that was troubling me, God took them all away.
Amen.
So it, it was just a beautiful thing.
Receive that peace. That's what, that's what we get when we come to him, and that's what I, that's one of the very first things that I said to pastor, I was like, man. I just had this sense of peace that has come over me, and it's the greatest feelings where I don't, I'm not worried about anything. Elder Nixon?
What I was gonna, gonna say, uh, as far as, um, what, uh, Mother Betty was talking about. Um, and then we have to also remember that sometimes we trespass against people and don't even know we have, you know, so we have to be careful. When, uh, we're doing things and, and holding grudges and, excuse my word, stupid. Um, because we're not, we're not walking in the way and the will of the Lord.
Amen, amen, um, Sister Betty, since you can pronounce words pretty good, I might have you. Uh, cuz you do, you break it down, I like it, cuz, uh, would you read First Samuel's one, two through nineteen? Then we'll go into that story of Hannah and her son. First Samuel's one, two through nineteen.
And. He had two wives, the name of the one. Was Hannah, and the name of the other, Panina, and Panina had children, but Hannah had no children. And this man went up out of the, out of his city yearly to worship and to sacrifice unto the Lord of hosts in Shiloh. And the two sons of Eli, Hotne and Phineas, the priests of the Lord, were there. And when the time was that Elkanah offered, he gave to Panina his wife and to all her sons and her daughter's portions. But unto Hannah he gave a worthy portion, for he loved Hannah, but the Lord had shut up her womb. And her adversary also provoked her sore, for to make her fret, because the Lord had shut up her womb. And as he did so year by year, when she went up to the house of the Lord, so she provoked. She provoked her, therefore she wept and did not eat. Then said Elkanah, her husband to her, Hannah, why weepest thou, and why eatest thou not, and why is thy heart grieved? And not I better to thee than ten sons? So Hannah rose up after they had eaten in Shiloh, and after they had drunk. Now Eli, the priest, sat upon a seat by a post in the temple of the Lord, and she was in bitterness of soul and prayed unto the Lord and wept sore. And she bowed a vow, and said, O Lord of hosts, if thou wilt indeed look on the affliction of thine handmaid. And remember me and not forget thine handmaid. But will give unto thee, thine handmaid, a man-child, then I will give him unto the Lord all the days of his life. And there shall no razor come upon his head. And it came to pass, as she continued praying before the Lord, that Eli marked her mouth. Now Hannah, she spoke in her heart, only her lips smoothed, but her voice was not heard, therefore Eli thought that she had run drunken. And Eli said unto her, how long would I be drunken? Put away thine wine, put away thy wine from thee, and Hannah answered and said, no, my lord, I'm a woman of a sorrowful spirit. I have drunk neither wine nor strong drink, but have poured out my soul before the Lord. Count not thine handmaid for a daughter of Belal, for out of the abundance of my complaint and grief have I spoken hitherto. Then Eli answered and said, go in peace, and the God of Israel grant thee thy petition, that thou hast asked of him. And she said, let thine handmaid find grace in thy sight. So the woman went her way, and did eat, and her countenance was no more sad. And they came up in the morning early and worshiped before the Lord, and returned, and came to their house to Arama. And Elkanah knew Hannah his wife, and the Lord remembered her.
Amen, there's a lot in that, and that, one of the first things we see was that, um. That he was, um, what do you say, his name is Elkanah, Elkanah? He was a devout man, because he went every, it was a year after year, he went up to worship. So we can see that he was a devout man, but he had two wives, and, um. You know, two wives, that's gonna be a problem, and you, you already seen and know the problem, one had children, the other one didn't. And being a man, he probably was very insensitive to Hannah's, I mean, you know, he loved her. But he was probably very insensitive to what was going on, because she never told him that this woman was messing with her. So she had to deal with this stuff by herself, and what I like about Hannah, Hannah did not deal with it like. You or I would have dealt with it probably, we probably would have been, yep, arguing, fussing and fighting. And he would have had a whole lot of trouble up in his home, but she, he still had the problem of her. You know, being sad and downhearted and stuff, but. But whenever he did go up, he gave his wife, uh, what's her, Penania. All this stuff, then gave her children, gave them their portion, but he gave Hannah a double portion. And that's because he loved her. Um, not because she had children, only because he loved her. And it says that the Lord closed her womb. And I believe Mother Adams mentioned that earlier about the Lord closing her womb. So if the Lord was involved, it was gonna take the Lord to change it. Nobody, we couldn't do it. We can't do it on our own. If he's involved in this stuff, or something that has happened to us, we might try. But it's not gonna work out for us. He's the one that's gonna have to change. Like she said, he had a plan. He had a plan for her. Also, and if, and if I, somebody could stop me if they got something to add in there. But this woman kept provoking her and pervert, provoking her and irritating her and it went on year after year. Could you stand for that year after year? Could you deal with the way she, how she reacted to that? I mean. We couldn't.
But it's kinda like the story of Sarah and Haggah. You know, um, the only difference is, is that. Sarah was the one that promoted the pregnancy. And tried stepping or did step in God's way, but even in that, God still gave. To Sarah the child that he promised. But um, had his wife. You know, sometimes when we're, we're women, we don't take our sisters' situation in regard. You know, so then we, you know, we got it going on. I, you know, I'm the head chief in this factory over here. So, so we, you know, we get a big head, we get prideful. But Hannah had a, a humble heart. That's the reason why she didn't react to, um, what's her name? Penania. Uh, they, she didn't react to her the way that most of us would have. She said, uh, you have no power over me. So she went to where the power was and that was to God. And so, I mean, even though she walked around bitter and unhappy and, you know, sad, her countenance wasn't in the right place. But when she went to God.
Amen.
She got herself together, said, you know, I know somebody that can do what nobody else can do.
That's true. They say words, us, sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never hurt me. But words do hurt.
Yes, they do.
But I like the part where Hannah, she knew her source. She knew that all she had to do was ask keep, as she was knocking on the door. She kept knocking on the door until she got what she want. She knew where her help came from. That's what I got from that. She was persistent.
Yeah, and she let God fight that battle. She didn't fight it. Let God fight that battle. Um, and then, you know, and her husband, like I said before, he was really insensitive to it. Cause he's asking these questions and this has been years and years it's going on. He's asking her, why are you weeping? Why aren't you eating? Why are you downhearted? And he's so blind to what's going on. I mean, year after year, you can't see that? You don't understand what's going on with her?
It's a personal thing though, mother. It's a, it's personal because.
Remember, God set that up, so let's.
Yes. Alright, we gonna move on from there.
But that's the reason.
Get off my guy.
We're gonna move on from there.
But that's the reason I said it's personal because.
Right.
He, you know, he can be part of your life, but he doesn't know the heart of the woman.
Right.
Okay, so if, if a woman desires to have a child, because I know I've been there and done that. If uh, you desire to have a child, you can't go to your man and make him understand your feeling.
Right.
Okay. Uh, he felt that he, you know, you have everything, baby. I'm giving you everything. Why are you upset? What, what's wrong? You know, he ain't understanding that she wants to be a mother. You know, so uh, when Hannah, you know, she said, okay, baby, I, I, you know, you, yeah, you good. You good, you, you done did all you can do, but you can't do this.
Right.
And that's the one thing, like you said, it's personal. And sometimes God places in a position where that you have to just seek him. And like you said, it was God's plan. It was God's plan. It was, and she was, you know, Hannah didn't go to, you know, Penaya. And you know, confessed to her like, you need to stop bothering me. You needed to, or nag to her husband. Because I mean, she kept peace in the house and dealt with it on her own, cause God was dealing with her.
Right.
So she could have caused more harm, you know, like we said, the tongue is a powerful thing. How we cause more harm amongst ourselves because of our tongue, you know? And so if she would have reacted and responded out of the flesh now the hurt, then. She may not have run her blessings. She may have caused something else. It may even caused her husband's death. Because of the way that he loved her and wanted to protect her. And so like you said, it was God's plan and she handled it just personally and took it in. And sometimes we think we're alone, but we're not. And sometimes you have to, God puts you in that situation, so you can realize you only can count on him at the end of the day.
Right, thank you Sharon. Those, some of these scriptures that we read before was telling us to, giving us some insight. To why Hannah did not react that a way. Cause it, it, it kept saying that this stuff happened to her year after year after year. And then finally, finally then, this one time, he called out to God. You know, and I don't know if she was doing it in the home, but it never said she was. She had waited till she went up and called out to him and asked God for uh, a son and stuff. And then like Betty was saying that she was mumbling, but she wasn't saying out loud. And Eli seen that and he had said that she was drunk, but she wasn't. And he blessed her, when after she explained to him, he blessed her. And of course, God blessed her. I like the thought that um, if God had done this to her. Then there was nobody else that was gonna change it for that, but God, and like you said, was a plan. I, um, does anybody else have anything right there at the end?
Hannah, not a person where, and she was faithful, why? Every year, she knew what she had to face, but she never stopped going up to the temple. And even when her husband didn't understand, and when uh, uh, Elkanah didn't understand, thought she was drunk. And she couldn't lash out because anger is a serious thing, hate. I wouldn't even say she was hateful, but I would say she was bitter, so she was sorrowful in soul and spirit. And she just kept going, believing and trusting God, even though I could. I wanna say re- something recently when I was sorrowful and hurt and asked and questioned God. Uh, it was when my children, Stefan and Risa, had to be in hospital. And I couldn't understand, I, 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 I can't explain the hurt. How I felt and the pain and I'm like, God, what's going on? And then the thing about it, the kids were saying, when mommy and daddy coming home then? And I remember this night Stephanie came, just while I lying there crying and saying, God, I don't know. Anyway, God, I said, you have a plan, you, you, I may not see it, I may not understand it. And I, I, I was so sad, I can't describe that, how I cried. And I poured my heart into God and I said, God, I see their life they're living in. You know, I'm trying to say to God, but why this is happening? I was not, I know they're not perfect, but God, they know, you know, it's no bad people. And this night I was talking and Stephanie came knocking, the Grammy, I miss my daddy and mommy. I didn't know, I didn't want her to see me crying and I said, come, I didn't turn the light on, I say, come and I hug. And I went took her back to the room and listen, I was washed in tears. I was broken. I, I ran back in the room. I had some, I mean, I used to sleepless nights. I didn't sleepless nights because I was worried or something. I just was like, I mean, praying and crying out to God and, you know, God, I thank you for doing this. I went through some things, but this was one. Nobody know how I took this, only God. This is the point I'm really saying this, they don't even know. I never said it to them, because, oh my God, I, I mean, you have a pray. I thought I would pray in those days, every minute, every, I was, especially when he was in the hospital. Because Stefan is, I might say, he's the life of the home, along with God, God first. This, I've never seen a man like this. I'm talking about, I grew up on an island. This man takes care of his family and he, I mean, he's love. Like I still people, if they mad, I don't even know when they mad, because you don't hear that kind of crawling, um, you know? That argument and all that. And I was like, and all this, I'm saying to God, you know, I was like, God, what, why? And then, you know, my daughter, I called her, how he's doing? Oh, he's alright. She don't, she don't open up, cause she know. I said, well, so why can't talk to him? No, he's resting. Over all that, I was like, oh, Lord, I'm. I can't explain, but I can imagine listening to this. How would Hannah eventually sorrowful in your spirit and, oh, Lord Jesus.
Let me tell you, I was in a room with her, so I know she pray all night long. All night long. I'm not lying. I've been in a room with her at a motel. We'd have been there three days and I didn't get much sleep.
Also, uh, in, in this paragraph, uh, in the scriptures. Uh, I wanted to add that, that when Hannah, uh, God gave her what she wanted, she made a promise.
Right.
And she kept her promise. She kept her promise. She kept it. I mean, she, you know, took, I think he was two or three years old when she took him and she, that wasn't her son, that was God's son.
And she also felt the pain then, just like, but you know what? Being faithful, he gave her more children. He gave her more children, yes. He gave her some more children. So you may have gave up one, but he doubled her trouble, like he did for Job. He doubled it for her. So um, does anybody else have anything on that? We'll move on. I'll read the central verse and it says. Let all bitterness and wrath and anger and clamor and evil speaking be put away from you and all malice. Ephesians four thirty-one, King James verse. Get rid of all bitterness, rage, anger, harsh words and slander, as well. All types of evil behavior. Ephesians four and thirty-one, that's from the New Living Translation. Key terms, gall of bitterness, a term used metaphorically to represent something intensely bitter. Often associated with suffering, misfortune, or even a kind of poison. It frequently ref- referenced in connection with the suffering of Jesus during his crucifixion. Baren, not reproducing, such as incapable of producing offspring. Or producing results or gain. Embrace, to collapse in the arms, to make up readily or gladly. Root of bitterness, a source of negativity and harmful influence that can lead to. And defilement and hinder spiritual growth. The introduction, um, Mother Shirley Case, can I get you to read those three? And the, and it's a little bit over on the other page. Could I get you to read those for me, please? Introduction.
Many people have gotten hurt or been wounded, misunderstood, mistreated, through no fault of their own. And these actions have left them many, them very bitter toward others. A wounded person can become a dangerous person because they tend to strike out and wound others. Because they're hurt and bitterness. They have allowed a root of bitterness to take hold in their heart. The root of bitterness becomes a very destructive force in their lives toward other people. This bitterness is like a spiritual cancer eating away at their lives. And when left unattended, it can destroy their lives as well as lives of others around them. It's like a poison that is allowed to be loose in a person's circle of friends. In Acts eight twenty-three, Peter talked to Simon about what was in his heart. When he offered them money for the power of God and let them know that he was in the gall of bitterness. And in the bond of annikity, Simon. Became distraught and Peter asked Peter to pray for him that none of these things he had spoken would be upon him. He did not want to be full of bitter jealousy and held captive by sin.
And uh, everyone can help her in this. What did you see in that? And right at the very end is that he did not want to be full of bitter jealousy. And held captive by sin. So even him, Simon, seen his own. He seen his own problem, you know, right at the end. It had to take somebody to tell him, that he seen it. And that's the way it is for us. We learning this. The word is telling us how we should live. So. Anybody wanna give something out on these first couple of verses or uh, paragraphs?
Like how it talks about um. Bitterness being like a cancer, but then it also says that it gets loose in a person's circle of friends. So not only do you have to be diligent with your, with your feelings and emotions and that bitterness, not only for you. But also for the people that are immediately around you and the people that depend on you and that pour into you. But also that you pour into as well. I thought that was interesting how it mentioned bitterness and it being loose in your circle of friends. So it's not just you being infected or you being impacted, it's others as well.
Lead the way at us and just keep on going and going and going and more destruction, you know, in our lives. Anybody else have anything on the, those couple of verse or paragraphs? Sharon, you wanna read um, the first two paragraphs in discussion and give us a little bit?
The believer must bring some things in his life under control to prevent them from spreading. And wrecking havoc in his life or in the lives of those around him. Bitterness can be sneaky and subtle, sneaky its way, sneaking its way into a person's spirit and hiding. It can be like a hidden force that can undermine a person's joy and the relationship with God and with others. Bitterness is like a silent invader that causes disruption within a person's heart. It hides because that any, it hides because that enemy does not want to be recognized and cast out. Through forgiveness and faith, but believers must acknowledge that, that it is there and embrace freedom through forgiveness. Which will transfer that bitterness, frustration and resentment into peace. Sometimes it's very difficult for one to relinquish control of their emotions and allow themselves to embrace forgiveness. Giving and receiving or surrender so that they can receive deliverance, but it is something that must be done. Part of the tragedy concerning bitterness is the fact that it spreads like a germ in a daycare center. If one child has a code, then nine times out of ten, if there is any interaction among the children, all of them will have a code. For bitterness has a root that spreads to others and they become infected with whatever one believer has.
Amen, and you know, you have been in a crowd and see one person upset and it, how that works the crowd. And everybody get worked up and, yeah, and then they just, the whole crowd is ready to. Do whatever that one person, you know, doesn't make sense, but that's the way it happens. Um, and sometimes it is sneaky, you know? Sometimes people do things right out. They do it right out. But most of the time, it's sneaky, cause it doesn't want anybody to know it's happening. You know, it just creeps in.
And this is why, you know, like we were saying earlier, doing that self-examination. And really examining yourself and seeing, you know, throughout the day, what. You know, throughout the day, what makes sure nothing is there, like you don't have any type of bitterness or whatever. Because it is sneaky and along you been had two months done passed and realized. Oh, I really didn't like when she did that two months ago, you know, and you done built up some type of frustration over your inner room. And that person comes in and you instantly have an attitude. Why do you have an attitude if you said you forgive, you know? And so it's just really how bitterness and how it spreads. And that's why sometimes you don't, no world has a saying, hurt people, hurt people.
Right.
And that is the truth. And sometimes when you are dealing with it, it is the time to be alone. You know, and that's what I got from even the story, how Hannah knew she was upset and she couldn't talk to her husband. It was something that she was, because like we said, God knows the heart. She wasn't saying it with the word. She was just talking to God and it was a personal like, um. It was just personal. So we don't always have to be what people, and that's what we, when our next one was saying, we have to give our sisters. Or people in general, just grace, because you never know what someone else is going through. And so what you're saying could hurt them. And even when you're hurt, if you know that you're not in a good place, maybe you need to stay away from that person or stay. And pray to God and get you, that's why I say first, pray to God first and then go, because hurt people do hurt and you may not meet, you know?
Amen. And I like that what you said because like you said, if, if she had have told him, it said, the story said he loved Hannah. So if he, if he knew that Penania was messing with Hannah like that, she might have caused. He might have, uh, caused her a whole bunch of problems, you know? Um, anybody else have anything before we move on? Do you wanna read tonight, uh, start? The next two paragraphs. The story of Hannah and then some was a woman.
The story of Hannah tells the story of a woman who had both negative and positive things going on in her life. She lived during a time when it was permissible for a man to have more than one wife. She had a husband who loved her and provided very well for her. Her husband enjoys spending time with her because he allowed her to travel with him to the temple. But she was barren and this was a disgrace to Jewish women. The other wife had children and his fermented her and the other wife had children and this tormented her. She was a woman of prayer, so she went to God in prayer about her circumstances, asking, asking him for. Asking him for, asking him for a son. It was very heavy burden that she carried, but she carried it. To the right source. I don't know if she knew that it was God who had shut her up, wounded. But it was God who opened her womb. So she, she was bitter in the soul or her mind. Her thoughts, her passion, her complete soul was that hurt, disappointment, anger, frustration and burden. Because her womb was shut up, but after thanking God for the mercy and grace that he extended to her. God not only gave her a son, but other children as well. God does exceed above all that we can ask. Is asking for things.
Amen. And you know, uh, sometimes if we're stressed out, we're depressed or whatever. That could possibly change, uh, our bodies for functioning correctly. So she was stressed out for years. She was depressed and frustrated for years. And sometimes the doctor tell us stress is not good for our bodies. And if we're stressed, it causes problems, you know, we can have heart problems. We can have all. Types of problems and that could have been part of her problem, but also it's God, you know? That that's what I see as a problem for Hannah, her, all that stuff was on the inside of her. She didn't let it out. And she did it this one instance, go and pray to him and let it out. When she let it out. And she was blessed by Eli, she felt so much better. So she went away from there happy. She went away happy. Um, anybody else have anything on those two?
You see Hannah was right to the point. She was precise. She said, a male child. She didn't just say, God, give me a child. That's what I always say. Lord, you get to the point and tell him, like those old people, they used to tell us, Jesus on the main line, tell him what you want. They said, boy, they, they used to tell us, now you don't go tell him you want to see Jane husband. So they was, and you know, people come to the altar and they, they say they have unknown requests. They say, now we scared these unknown requests because. The Bible said, let your requests be made known. These unknown requests, we don't know what you're asking for, but. That's how they really grew us and taught us, because they were serious. They were serious. And you know, so growing up, you know, you always, you go to God and say, tell him. You, and nobody could tell, yes, you could tell sister so and so to pray for you, but nobody like you know what you need. You go to him and tell him, don't go and say, be careful who you're telling. Cause you go to, go to the altar and tell him, they say, you gotta have an altar in your house. Where it's in the bathroom, where it's, you get a little prayer room or whatever. That's how they go, go to God. Tell him what you want, tell him what you need.
You know, I was thinking about with that story where they said that Hannah was dealing with a lot, because even though it was acceptable in that time to have two wives. Being a woman, you say you love me, not still, we're going here, here, but then I gotta share you with somebody else, you know? So not even dealing, and then that person has a child. She has your children and she's mocking me. So just dealing with all them emotions and feelings and that Hannah kept it all in. It just shows that's, you know, we needed to be a lot like Hannah. You know, so that some of our emotions and stuff and how spiritually and emotionally mature she was in God that. She wasn't out there just going off and fun, that she went straight to God for it and that's where she got it. And then, like you said, once she let it out, he had that.
Yeah, yeah.
I wanted to say something.
Go ahead.
Um, when we talk about, um. This is the title of this Bible study, the Deliverance from Bitterness. And, um, this is Hannah's problem. Um, she wanted to have a child. She was becoming bitter because she couldn't. Have children. There was a stigma associated with being barren. And then her husband had another wife, but we need, um, deliverance from bitterness. All of us have, uh, bitterness, uh, from other. Things. And, um. I wrote down some of the things we have bitterness about, being lied or gossip about, but from other people. Uh, we being made, have pain because somebody made fun of us or we're ugly or you're poor. Misunderstood, you've been molested as a child or even as an adult abused by your spouse or child abuse. We have all these things that we become bitter and we hold this stuff inside of us. And we're bitter toward our parents, our children, our church members, our spouses, family members, grandparents. Uh, friends and strangers. We have bitterness for different things, but then, um. All those things are emotions and they temporary. And we, when you, when you get caught up in that temporary emotional cesspool. Then yes, when you go down this rabbit hole. And you start running your blood pressure up, you're depressed, you're eating, you're, you weigh three hundred and fifty pounds. You see what I'm saying? I'm just saying that's how we, we get caught up because we forget the power of God. And Hannah never forgot. She was persistent. She stayed on her knees. She prayed and she worshiped him. And so that's what I, I just wanted to make sure that we understand. Me, number one. You gotta know where your help come from. If you keep, if you keep your mind stayed on Jesus, you keep yourself prayed up, you keep your mind. Full of some scripture, you, you, you go to Bible study, you go to Sunday school lesson, you praise the Lord. And then all of these things that are weighing you down and tearing you apart and tearing the church apart. They don't have no power. They don't really, never had any power. But when we turn it over to the Lord, then all of this stuff is, uh, this is worked out.
Mother Brenda.
Yes.
I wanted to say, uh, as Mr. Betty was, uh, speaking, uh, scripture that came to mind is in all thy ways acknowledge him. And he shall direct your path. What we don't understand, wherever we're at in, in our lives. If we acknowledge God in our bitterness, in our anguish, in our depression. In all of our ways, he said, acknowledge him and he will direct our paths. If we do that, we wouldn't stay so long where we're at.
Amen. Um, Sister Betty, you wanna read the last two? Wait a minute. Say last two, but you can just read, yeah, the last two and I'll give Stefan the conclusion.
Okay, where am I? God has made. God had made provision for every believer to be delivered. And he has made provision for all men to be victorious, but sometimes the believer must do something. But sometimes the believer must do something, just like Hannah did. She made up her mind. That she was gonna seek God until he let her know that he had heard her cry and that he was answering her. She sought God through prayer so much that she was drunk in his spirit. And the priests thought that she was drunk with wine. She had gotten a hold of God. And was determined not to let go until she received her deliverance. Sometimes believers must be just that determined when they realize that bitterness is about to destroy them. If God doesn't do something for them.
Amen, amen.
Just bear, you read that with conviction.
Oh yeah, I know something about this.
Go ahead and give us something. She read it with conviction.
I, I just know that, uh, cause I, I did that with my daughter. There's a nine, eight, nine year difference between my, my, my daughter. And my son. And, uh, I prayed fervently for that baby. And, uh, then when I did become pregnant. And, um, I knew it was the Lord. I never thought at that time that I should have dedicated her to the Lord. Because I really wanted her. I prayed for a girl and she came along. And, um, and but, uh. I know that if you, if, if you keep yourself aligned and you, you knock on the door. You persistently knocking on that door, God will answer your prayer. And if it's not meant for you to, if you don't receive it, maybe it wasn't meant for you to have. And either way it goes. But I just wrote down this scripture here, Jeremiah three thirty-three. It says, call to me and I will answer you and tell you great and unsearchable things. You do not know. I truly believe in that. So when we get to talking about depression, sadness, anger. And all of that, uh, when you humble yourself and get on your knees. You don't have to get on your knees. You can stand up, bow your head, close your eyes, open your eyes, talk to the Lord. And, oh, he can show you some things you ain't never seen before. Because all power is in his hand. You have to believe that. That's where your faith comes in.
Amen. Minister Stefan?
Believers must. Believers must deal with their emotions. When they experience contrary feeling coming up in their spirits, they must stop and deal with these feelings. Jesus asked the man, will thy be made whole? John five six. You must want deliverance for yourself and do what you are supposed to do and let God do the rest. My mother used to say, if you want to be a sweet old man or woman, you must be a sweet young man or woman. So if a person is in bitterness of soul, he must deal with his soul. A believer must let go of the need to be right, assess their situation. And be honest about what is really going on inside of them. They must speak the truth about themselves, watching for every opportunity to be delivered and set free, even in their souls. Do not give in to the devil and do not allow freedom to dis- to dissipate right before your eyes. Let go of pride and humble yourself and God will do the rest.
Amen. What did you, what did you see set out in this?
Self-evaluation and you know, everything, the lesson today has been about bitterness, but. That, that's something that's internal. And so we have to look in at ourselves. And we've been talking a lot about the external impact and how it will seep onto others and how, you know, how it will impact others, but really it starts. With you. It's your bitterness that you have to deal with and resolve with the help of the Lord. Um, but I think that's what I got out of the conclusion is start with you.
Sometimes it's hard to look at ourselves. It really is. Sometimes it could be hard to look and say. This is what's going on, but it's good to do, you know, and be honest with yourself. Be honest with yourselves.
I keep thinking about when, um, Sister Larissa was speaking and it's every situation. How did you respond? What was your part in it? You know, and that's the one thing. And I mean, that's been what about a couple of weeks there, but that's been something that has been really.
That might be hard to deal with, but it's, it's a good thing to look at.
You look at yourself, like Ella Jackson said, you have to look inside yourself and that self-examination. And be able to surrender and really submit and give it up. Because like he says, you know, if we seek him, we will find him. And some, you know, like it says, um, we was reading and it told us. You know, he's made it available for everyone. But that doesn't mean everyone will get it. You have to, he's not forcing it upon you, you know? But you have to make the choice. You have to do something, you know? And so that's something, you know, we say, I've been praying for this. I've been praying for this. But what have you done? You know, and that's something that, um, is a challenge for some, you know? For me, just seeking and being transparent enough in front of God and being vulnerable to him. And say, you know, this is the area that I'm weak in and this is what I need you to remove.
Amen. Anybody else got anything out of there? We go into the, go ahead, Ella.
Uh, uh, the scripture came to mind that you quoted creating me a clean heart and renew a right spirit within me. How is God gonna create what we, what we won't allow him to do?
Right.
We have to set you up, when you're, when you're seeking God to create in you something new, you gotta get quiet. Cause we think we know what we need. God knows what we need. So if we're not seeking his face for the renewal of our hearts, then we, we're just doing it in vain.
Amen. Amen. First question is, why is bitterness so destructive? Why is bitterness so destructive? She's laughing. She said it's gonna, go ahead. Amen. Anybody else got anything else? You pick up your mic? Okay, what causes bitterness?
Unforgiveness.
Right. What can be done to get rid of bitterness?
Pray about it.
Go ahead.
Forgiveness.
Forgiveness.
Repentant.
Yeah.
Faith.
Yes.
That's it.
That it? We was waiting for more. See? The essential thought, many times deliverance is only a prayer away. Prayer away. Elder Nixon, you wanna pray us out?
Father God, we come before you first to say thank you for this word on tonight, God. We thank you for the teacher. We thank you for all of us that are students, learning of your word, Father, and your will and your way. Father God, we ask that as we depart from this place, but never from your presence, Lord, that you lead, guide and strengthen us on every hand and in every way. Father God, we thank you in advance for what you have done and what you're going to do in our lives. And we thank you in advance and we say amen.
Amen.